Welcome to the 2022 School Board Candidate Forum for the Midland Public Schools, co-sponsored by the Midland Branch of the American Association of University Women and the Midland Area League of Women Voters. The American Association of University Women advances gender equity for women and girls through advocacy, education, and research with a special focus on pay equity leading to economic security. The League of Women Voters is a national, nonpartisan political organization open to all citizens, both men and women. It is committed to the informed and active participation of citizens in our government. Neither organization supports nor opposes candidates. I am Kim Stanky, President of the Midland Area League of Women Voters, and I will serve as our moderator tonight. Jody Gardner, a member of the American Association of University Women, and Catherine Redwine, a member of the League of Women Voters of the Midland Area, will be our official timekeepers. Tonight, we are pleased to meet and hear from candidates, I think seven now rather than eight, vying for three, four-year positions to the Midland Public School Board. MP Chakowski declined to participate in our candidate forum. I want to welcome the candidates on the stage. Mindy Cox, Sarah Ladwin, John Lauterbach, Phil Roush, Jennifer Ringold, Matthew Samaki, Jimmy Sheets. We hope that you see and hear, what you see and hear tonight will help you decide how to vote in the upcoming election on Tuesday, November 8th. Each of the candidates will have one minute for an opening statement. After all candidates have spoken, I'll pose a series of questions. Candidates will be allowed a one-minute response that will begin when they start speaking. At the request of any candidate, I will repeat the question on the floor. Each candidate responds, each candidate responds, our timer will raise a warning of 30 seconds when it remains, 15 seconds, and a stop card when the time is up. When the time is up, I will stop the speaker, allowing only the completion of a sentence. After the question and answer period, each candidate may give a one-minute closing statement. I would like to remind our audience to remain quiet throughout this candidate forum and save your applause for the conclusion. A drawing was held to determine the order in which the candidates will speak. That order will be maintained throughout the program. We will begin with the opening statements. Each candidate will have one minute to introduce themselves and give a brief overview of their qualifications and reasons for running. And Mr. Samaki has been selected to go first. You have the floor in one minute.
Thank you so much. Hello, Midland. My name is Matt Samaki, and I'm running for MPS School Board. And I wanted to let you know why I'm running, and a huge reason is because I grew up in Midland as the son of two educators, Jim and Ann Samaki. My wife teaches currently in the district, and we have parents of children who also attend the school district. I'm a certified social studies teacher and a certified administrator. I have a master's degree in teaching and curriculum and a doctorate in education. If elected, I will collaborate to provide safe and secure learning environments, high-quality facilities, and consider the ever-changing social, health, and economic landscape to provide excellent academic opportunities for all. I'll research best practices, build relationships, communicate, consider all points of view, and adapt to unique situations to help all achieve success. Thank you so much, and I appreciate your vote this fall.
Ms. Cox?
Hello, Midland. I am Mindy Cox. I am here tonight, first and foremost, because I'm a mother of three kids in our district. With the changes that have happened over the past couple of years, it left me very concerned because a lot of decisions were being taken away from me as a parent. The Michigan State Law, Section 380 dot 10, says it is the natural fundamental right of parents to determine and direct the care, teaching, and education of their children. The public schools of this state serve the needs of the pupils by cooperating with the pupil's parents. And with that being said, I felt like over the last couple of years, my concerns were not being heard or addressed as a parent. And that's what got me involved in the school board and paying attention to decisions that were being made, not only at our local level but also our national level. And because of that, it left me with lots more confusion and also wanting to figure out what that process is and be involved in this process for our children. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Ringold?
I'm excited to be here tonight and grateful for this opportunity to share my unique perspective and how we can help students and staff access what they need and hold our administrators and school board accountable. My name is Jennifer Ringold. I'm an MPS graduate and also a parent who has watched education change in the last decade. We have hardened targets, increased anxiety, isolated families, decreased support staff, expected perfection, and lost sight of what it means to create safe spaces for our children to learn. I'm also an educator. I'm passionate about learning as a pathway to problem-solving, critical thinking, and healthy relationships. As a leader, I'm a collaborator. This approach is challenging when working with people of differing opinions, but we all truly want what is best for our young people, and we are stronger together. I'm running for school board to invite all of us into new ways of building futures for Midland Public Schools.
Good evening. I'm Jimmy Sheets, and I am a father of three young girls here in our Midland Public School System. And I'm also a business owner in this community. I decided to become involved in our school systems as I saw what was happening with my daughters and what was happening with education and what they were being subjected to when it came to certain protocols that were brought down through the last two years. The last two years have been very difficult for our students. And what has happened to them with their reading, math, and education has not been taken, in my opinion, as seriously as it should have been. And the lack of programs that should have been in place to help these students get back on track. Our kids are behind two years, and we need to do something to get them back on track, and that's what I'm here to do. If elected, I will be that person and that voice for our children with no political agenda.
Thank you. Ms. Ladwin?
Hi. I'm Sarah Ladwin. I am a mother of three. Two of my boys are still within MPS school. I am, have been a volunteer for the past 13 years in a variety of capacity within MPS, from room mom, tutor, fundraising, supporting our music and sports teams. I am extremely passionate about our schools, our kids, supporting and supporting our teachers. However, I feel that we've sort of lost our focus on academic excellence, which I believe is the only focus the school should have, as on supporting the best possible education for our students, supporting teachers so that they are able to do that. I also believe that parents, every parent has a right, every caregiver has a right in the say of their children's education. I believe that we respect each other best if we listen and understand we all come from a different place, but we focus on our kids and their education. Thank you.
Thank you.
First, I'd like to thank the AAUW, League of Women Voters, Gray-Saidow Library, and MCTV for hosting this forum. It is imperative that the community can learn about our viewpoints and our vision for success in the future of MPS. Again, my name is Phil Roush, and I'm running for reelection to the MPS School Board to serve our community the best that I know how, and that is by continuing to make the district the best it can be for our students, our parents, and our staff. I'm extremely passionate about our schools. Now being the parent of third-generation MPS students, we can and will continue our tradition of excellence by ensuring academic achievement for all students, whether pursuing college, the trades, or other vocational programs. We will ensure the safety of our students and make sure that the community is involved in our curriculum-building process. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is John Lauterbach. I have the privilege of currently serving on the Board of Education. I've been the treasurer for the last two years, and I chair the Finance Facilities and Operations Committee. I'd be honored to earn another term on the Board. I have deep roots in the Midland community. I'm a native Midlander. I'm a third-generation business owner. I've practiced law in the community for 28 years. I've also had the great privilege of serving as a circuit court judge and chief judge of all of Midland County's trial courts. I've also served by appointment of the Michigan Supreme Court as Chair of the Michigan Attorney Discipline Board. I mention these roles because I have a track record of being objective. I listen to all sides. I weigh competing considerations. I make decisions that are based on facts, not emotion or politics. As a Board member, I've made decisions based on one thing: what's best for all 7,700 kids in the district. I'd be honored to have your vote for reelection. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates. We now begin with the questions. Each candidate will have one minute to answer each question, and I will again repeat the question at the request of the candidate. Our first question of the evening is, "What would the Midland Public Schools do in order to attract and retain exceptional teachers and staff?" And Mr. Samaki?
Thank you so much. It's extremely important when working with our staff members and understanding the entire staff of whether that's from teachers to administration and custodial staff and everywhere in between, the social-emotional learning and the amount of stress that they're currently under, given the coming out of the COVID-19 pandemic and the additional responsibilities asked upon our teachers and the rest of our staff on a day-to-day basis. And being able to help and support and nurture and shift that culture in such a way, even more so than there currently is now, where they can get the supports and resources and the help that they need, and that way, those teachers that we have hired stay in the school district. It also provides a really strong attraction tool when other teachers that are looking to be hired into MPS understand that Midland Public Schools is a school district that supports them and is going to take care of them for the long being, and will make our schools as best as they possibly can be. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a great question. I come from a background of teachers. My mom's a teacher of 30 years. My grandparents were all teachers at different levels of education. And for me, I think the biggest thing that we can do for our teachers is listen. From the conversations that I've had with teachers in our district, I think a lot of them feel frustrated and feel like their voice is not being heard. They're afraid to talk to the current administration about the concerns that they have in their classrooms. And one thing I think that we can do is just keep that open line of communication between the staff. I think the school board needs to be involved, be at the buildings, talking to our teachers, encourage collaboration together, and encourage open and transparent discussion between all parties and all staff holders in our district. MPS has had 47 resignations and 32 retirements since January and 60 new hires since June. With approximately 10% turnover, policy should be in place for exit interviews to honestly determine why staff are leaving, and we need to make sure that our new employees are empowered to be successful and want to stay at Midland Public Schools. Along with offering competitive salaries, benefits, and bonuses, our staff are worthy to maintain life-work balance, and they need to be listened to. I hear regularly from MPS teachers that they feel burnt out and unheard. We need to guarantee more time for teacher prep during the day, provide scheduling that limits teacher travel between buildings, work towards smaller class sizes, and better student-teacher relationships. Teachers need administrators who support their expertise and provide recognition unrelated to evaluation. And our substitute pay should be a living wage so that there's adequate coverage for teachers who are absent. We will attract and retain teachers who feel heard, valued, and assured that they cannot be replaced.
When it comes to teachers, I've had the privilege of speaking to many of them, past and current. And the things that I hear about from current teachers is the frustrations that they are dealing with. Multiple have come to me by putting my name on a sign. They feel that I'm a person they can come to and speak to about these issues that they are having with the current administration and with the superintendent, who they feel do not understand because they are not listening to the front-line people, which are the teachers. It makes no sense for us not to be listening to these teachers, and without this type of communication from top to bottom and with that leadership, it is going to be very difficult to attract higher-quality teachers, educators, and professionals to our community. So without that type of communication being opened up in the school board and superintendents and leadership being in the schools and being at that ground level, there's no way we can make educated and correct decisions to help our teachers.
I believe our teachers, just like everyone in the workforce, wants to feel valued. I don't think there's any difference in that. They want to be compensated properly. They want to be well-equipped to do a good job. They want to have the tools that they need to be successful. I think no matter the industry, no matter where you are, those are the keys to success. Children want to feel successful by getting good grades, by feeling that they learn and understand what they're being taught. Teachers deserve to feel success by being supported in those endeavors to help their children. They became teachers to help those students. And I think by feeling that they are reaching those students and having the tools that they need to lift all the students in their classroom, they'll get that personal gratification. But I also think everyone deserves to do a job that they're well rewarded for as well. I believe it's important that we are benchmarking our teachers, making sure they're compensated, and that they are being paid appropriately across, I mean, all industry, or not all industry, but across the teaching industry as well. But that, I think, is how we tell them that they are appreciated as well.
Over the last four years, I've had the privilege of developing a really strong relationship with Mark Hackbart, who's the president of the Midland City Educators Association, our teachers' union. And I think what's foundational to that relationship is collaboration and listening. And I'm really proud of the background that I've been able to develop with our staff, not just our teachers but our other employee groups as well. Our collaboration has been around compensation, making sure our community is involved and is a welcoming place for our staff as they enter the workforce, and to advocate at the state level so that we can properly compensate our employees. I've had a lot of strong relationships with both Representative Glenn and Senator Thomas to make sure that we properly fund education and give our staff the supports that they need around 31A funding for at-risk students, as well as making sure that we pay down the unfunded pension liabilities at the state level.
I think the number-one thing that we can do to attract and retain talent is to create a culture and foster a culture of appreciation for the work that our education professionals do. Appreciation takes a lot of different shapes. Competitive compensation, for sure, is one way to show our team how we appreciate them. At our last board meeting, we asked the administration to give us some projections for some one-time compensation adjustments that recognize the effort that's been put forth over the last two years in very challenging times. I also think that we can show it in other ways, too, such as providing additional professional development opportunities and technology support in the classroom to allow our best and brightest to stay ahead of the curve. Finally, I think we need to sell Midland. I think we need to make sure that our community and our district are the kind of place where the best and brightest want to come live, work, and play. Thank you.
Now, our second question. What policies do you think the Board could enact to address issues of student mental health?
Thank you. There are several policies currently being explored regarding mental health for students. Students right now, across the entire country, not just a Midland issue, are struggling. The numbers continue to rise. Suicide is the second-leading cause of death for those aged 13 to 18 years old. One in five are going to be struggling with some type of mental health challenge or mental illness. It's a very real, true, and serious issue that our students are facing. So in terms of the Board, making sure that we're listening to the community, that we're able to communicate with those students, we're able to work with our private providers, we're able to work with our healthcare system, we can work with our community mental health, we can work with our nonprofits, and be able to help and make those resources readily available for students regardless of whatever issue it is they might be facing and regardless of their demographics, experiences, or environments they may come from.
This issue is very important to me, as my husband is actually a practicing psychiatrist here in our community, and I see day-to-day the effects that a lot of these kids are facing by his experience and in his practice. And as myself, as a nurse of 17 years, I've also seen the mental health effects on our kids. To me, I feel like the schools best can support these children by providing extracurricular activities for our kids. I feel like when kids are involved and active and feel a sense of camaraderie in their community and in their school and feel that sense of pride, that they will be successful. These are very challenging issues. I don't think the schools specifically should be treating these kids. I think that's a decision between parents and their doctor and their families. I don't think, I do think the schools need to be there as a support and a guide, absolutely. But ultimately, I think it belongs to the parents and their physician and their child.
In my professional life and youth ministry, mental health is key. Our students right now, regardless of age, are struggling and have been facing isolation for the last couple of years, but anxiety has been on the rise for over a decade. Reducing shame and stigma around mental health should be a key priority for the Board of Education. Policies that create safe spaces to discuss mental health, providing skills for regulation and positive relationships through social-emotional learning and social-emotional learning coaches, and maintaining life-work balance for students and staff should be priorities of the Board. Expecting perfection is not possible. Mental health suffers when we expect perfection from our students.
When it comes to mental health, I had the privilege of speaking with several mental health professionals in our community. And what they see going on in the public schools is that the school is trying to take a more, a stronger role in trying to provide mental health for young adults and teens, okay? And not being a trained professional in this field, they fear is causing more harm than good. By providing or in training teachers to see the facts or the early onset of mental problems like this, that student needs to be evaluated with parents and taken to a mental health professional. Public schools are not medical facilities and should not be providing this type of services except for the teachers to be able to deal with the children, involve the parents, and get that child to a medical professional that is trained in that field.
I do believe that our children's mental health is a concern, obviously. We all see that. However, I believe that by hitting the mental health aspect versus trying to understand what's the true problem is maybe missing the point. It's like putting a Band-Aid on a broken arm. Why are the kids feeling stressed? Why is the school environment no longer a place that they feel comfortable, if it is the school, whatever it is in our community or our culture? I believe that if our kids can feel successful, if they are being raised up in their classrooms, if they have teachers who believe in them, if they have coaches who lift them up, if they are involved in activities where they can feel that success, that's where school can actually help. However, if there is a child who has a serious mental illness or issue, definitely it's the school's responsibility to identify that, but it's ultimately the parent who has the call and the responsibility for taking those mental health issues into their hands. And they should always be aware and informed of those situations. Thank you.
The mental health of our students is imperative to their success. We know that when students are centered and engaged in the classroom and feel safe and belonging, they learn better and they achieve more. It should be noted, however, as well, that the same goes for our teachers. When their mental health is centered, when they are comfortable in the classroom, feel safe and supported, they teach better and the students achieve more as well. So it's imperative that we work on both, students and staff. I do want to highlight our multi-tiered system of supports that the school district does provide today. I'm very proud of the services that Jeff Jaster and his team provide because they do involve the parent at every step of the process, not just to provide wraparound services to the student but the family as well.
I think the first thing that we can do to address the student mental health issues is, first of all, to de-stigmatize it, to make sure that kids understand that it's okay to talk about it and it's okay to ask for help. I also think we can assist our education professionals with professional development opportunities and training to enable them to identify warning signs and refer students for appropriate support. And I also think, this is going to be a recurring theme with me, I trust experts. And I think that we should take advantage of the public health experts in our community. It's a little bit intimidating to be on a stage with Dr. Samaki and trying to talk about the tremendous support resources that we have in our community. But I've seen that collaboration between the school district and health professionals in our community over the course of the last two years, and I think we're very fortunate to have that tremendous partnership. I think it should continue. Thank you.
All right. The third question. How do you think the school board should address issues of diversity, equity, inclusion, and justice?
Thank you so much. What's been talked about a little bit earlier from the candidates is the idea of making connections. And if students are marginalized or they don't feel like they have a voice, then those students are going to lack connection. They're going to lack support, and they're not going to feel safe and secure in our schools. So by embracing diversity, equity, and inclusion, we're helping to lift up students that may not have a voice or that may not feel like they belong. And when Midland Public Schools staff, community, family, parents, teachers can wrap their arms around these students and show that they care and show that they are supporting those students and that they have a voice, it's going to do wonders for these students who come into our schools from environments that may not always be safe. They may not always feel like they're able to truly share who they are, but they can come into Midland Public Schools and feel safe, welcome, and be the best that they can possibly be.
One thing I love about Midland is that we are such a diverse community. We have so many opportunities here. I feel like there's so many programs in our community that celebrate our diversity. And I think this, just like Mr. Samaki said, I think we do need to embrace that and encourage that diversity. But also, I personally think we don't need to focus always on our differences. I think especially in our young population, we need to find what unites us, what things we have in common to build us up and to encourage us at every level. I think coaches, teachers are instrumental in providing this encouragement. Kids need to feel a sense of belonging. They need to feel safe. They also need to feel like they're valued, their opinions are valued, and that they matter. We are blessed with wonderful teachers in our community, wonderful coaches who do inspire and lift these kids up and keep that focus on excellence. Thank you.
If we're preparing our young people to be successful after completing K through 12 at MPS, we need to make sure that they have learned that not everyone has the same life experience that they have had. All students deserve mirrors to see people like them in their learning, and all students need windows to see people who are not like them in their learning. We need to have conversations about who we are and how we express ourselves, and we must be able to question how the world works and how we share a biodiverse multicultural planet. Honest and accurate information about gender- Honest and accurate information about gender, sexual orientation, rage, I'm sorry, race, age, ethnic background, religion, difference in ability, economic circumstances, and family configuration, that honest information dismantles stereotypes and assumptions, builds self-acceptance and self-esteem, fosters healthy relationships, improves decision-making, prevents bullying and abuse, and saves lives. This is how we train staff to lead with respect, trust, and courage, ensure all equitable collaborative and inclusive culture in our schools, and enable all of our students to achieve success.
When it comes to diversity, as a person in a service-based industry, I deal with a ton of this. And I see how well our community comes together. I see these students. And students need to feel safe when it comes to going to our schools. And I see this with young children. You can take a group of young children and put them in a room together, and they will play with each other no matter their skin color, eye color, hair color, or what name they call God by. The only time that this becomes an issue is when people try to make it a problem or make it an issue for children, okay? When we focus on what makes us so different all the time, this is what, in my opinion, divides the children and causes these rifts between them. Instead of just letting these children understand that we are all from the same place, we are all together, and we can all learn the same way and be the community that we are. There's no reason that we need to teach these young people to be decisive and look at people differently than the way one person stands and then the other one does.
I personally think DEI is a dangerous agenda. I know that that's controversial to say, but I'm just going to hit it head on. Like the others have said, we do have fabulous diversity in our community, I believe. And I think it doesn't help the mental health of our kids to try to categorize them and give them moral categories, whether good or bad, based on the way that they look. That is not good or healthy for our kids. Equity is a word that does not belong in a school. Equity implies equality of outcome. How is a teacher supposed to understand whether a student understands the material or not if there is not an appropriate grade? How do we teach children that hard work is critical and important if they don't get rewarded for the hard work? Equity is a word that means equality of outcome. We're looking for equality at the beginning, and I think we are providing that in MPS right now. I do not see a situation where all of our children do not have opportunities for success. I think the school could do better to rise up kids who are struggling, but that doesn't have anything to do with the way that they look. Thank you.
If you want to see what an inclusive school district should look like, look at the front page of the paper two weeks ago. Victory Day at Midland High lifted up our students with mental health, or mental disabilities. The success of those students was not just about those less fortunate than many of us in the room, but it also included our students that are in traditional classrooms, and both gained more. When we include everybody, we all achieve more because the student feels comfortable in the situation that they are. They're grounded in that classroom, and they feel welcome to learn in our buildings. The role of the board is to set a vision for what DEI looks like, which we did two years ago. And I'm extremely proud of the work that we did. We did it in an open forum through extra board meetings, open to the public, and included the community in that conversation. And I stand behind what we did two years ago.
Every single day, we all make choices about the words that we use. Most of us choose to not use language that we know will be hurtful or offensive to those that we work with, that we live with, that we interact with each day. We make those choices because we know we're going to have better outcomes in our personal relationships if we do. What we're doing at the Midland Public Schools is educating kids about historical events so that they can better understand why particular words, phrases, gestures, or what have you might resonate differently with people who have a different life experience. So that they can then make their own choices about the language that they want to use and how they interact with other people. And that is squarely within the mission of a school district. I think that the positive work we're doing is being undermined by misinformation about what we're actually doing. What we're actually doing is really good stuff, and like Phil, I absolutely support it. Thank you.
Our fourth question. In times of unstable revenues and tight budgets, decisions often must be made regarding budgetary priorities. Please outline your budgetary priorities as specifically as possible.
So currently, Midland Public Schools has thirty percent in its fund equity, which means that there's a surplus in funds for Midland Public Schools, which is absolutely fantastic. However, when the board is making those decisions and working with leadership, it's really important to take a look at our facilities and look at potential repairs that can happen for our buildings. It's important to look at contracts and different areas where there could be further money used, support staff, and also support our classrooms as well regarding materials. So those decisions are not easy when deciding on the best way to spend those funds. But it's a really unique situation to have money in the bank, and it's fantastic. Myself, as a former teacher, I've been pink-slipped three times, and I know exactly how uncomfortable that is to know you are not coming back to your district and having a job. So it's important for the school board to both be very conservative in terms of how they're spending their money, but then also looking at the best opportunities to improve the district with the budget that's available. Thank you.
I think Midland Public Schools, as far as done a wonderful job at attending the last month's board meeting and listening about the extra money that we have in the fund balance. I commend the people on the school board for their fiscal responsibility. I do think, however, that we need to talk specifically to the people that are running these programs. We need to talk to our principals to find out what budget things are important to each facility, each school, what the needs are in each classroom. I spoke with a teacher just a couple of weeks ago that informed me that her pod of teachers in an elementary school had to purchase their own science and reading curriculum for their students in their classroom. This, to me, was unacceptable, especially with the millions of dollars that our district has received in SIR funds. I do think we need to have more transparency when it comes to the finances of our school and see exactly where the money is being given and where it's being spent. Thank you.
Our stakeholders count on the board to continually remember who is at the table and recognize who is not when making policy and financial decisions. These decisions directly reflect the values and priorities of our community. Being good stewards of the ninety million dollars that come from taxpayer funds is essential. About eighty-seven percent of our expenses each year are related to staff because we're a people-powered instruction system. Without exceptional educators, we can't build futures for students. So educators would be a priority for me. As a board member, I plan to openly discuss and evaluate how future expenses would impact everyone who is involved with Midland Public Schools. Expenses that we approve need to be related to how futures are built for students in the community. Programs like Equitable Free Meals, summer schools, student support specialists, preschool, learning coaches, the Resiliency Program, Career Tech, early college, and relevant staff trainings are all things that I would prioritize funding for to help teachers be ready to lead students who are ready to learn.
When it comes to a balanced budget, I'm very familiar with. And when it comes to Midland Public Schools, I do agree, we have done a phenomenal job in having a surplus with our money. Like Mindy said, though, I am a full support on having this money that we have and where it is going and where it's being used needs to be shown and be more transparent on the programs and projects that we have. When it comes to spending our money, just like in my line of work, I have to look at my frontline workers and understand that they are number one. Without our staff and our teachers, our support staff, and we have nothing. So making sure that our teachers and our staff are well-funded and taken care of, that is a priority for me. And then also looking into extra programs to help get our kids back into reading, math, science, and get these programs onboard and up and running is top of my list.
I believe the number-one priority for the school budget should reflect the number-one priority for the school. That's educating the students, giving them the best possible education. I believe in best practices. I believe that we should be evaluating what those practices are and making sure we have the funds to support those practices. I do believe that we, whatever it takes to provide an excellent education is our primary mission. That's what the budget focuses on. If that means providing better financial support for our teachers, for our classrooms, or for our buildings, it needs to be making sure that the focus is on the outcome, which is for the students. Ultimately, that is the only reason for a school. I think that it is important, though, that the teachers are listened to, that the school administrators, not just school administrators, but the building administrators who are in the thick of things on a day-to-day basis, who have a good understanding of what they need, that they are also being listened to as well. Thank you.
We've been really cautious through the last two years with our fund balance, and it's put us in a place where we now have a thirty percent fund balance to ride through tough times, but also take time to recognize the talent of our staff that we have today. I will always prioritize spending money in the classroom first, the classroom second, and the classroom third. And what that manifests itself as in specifics for our staff is looking at making sure we're competitive in salaries, have the support staff needed to support our educators in the classroom and at class sizes, and making sure they're right-sized. What it looks like for families and students is individualized curriculum, as exemplified by our PAST program as an alternative high school, pre-primary center to engage with the youngest students under five, ALPS program, and the early middle college that we just started. Thank you.
My three budgetary priorities would be facilities, attraction and retention of the best and brightest employees, and classroom service delivery. As others have said previously, Midland Public Schools has been historically fiscally conservative. We stand on the shoulders of giants, and as I look out, I see at least three former school board members and the spouse of a person that I think is the gold standard in school superintendents. We have a solid financial footing because of the hard work that's been done by others. A thirty percent fund balance is no small accomplishment, especially in an era of declining enrollment. The number-one thing we can do, though, is we have to understand we are in the enrollment business. The way schools are funded in Michigan, we have to continue to provide the value proposition to parents who want to send their kids to the Midland Public Schools. Thank you.
Our fifth question. What do you think is the greatest challenges facing the Midland Public Schools in the coming year?
Well, I'm biased because I'm a part of the Mental Health Partnership, and so that's one of the biggest issues that we're going to be dealing with, and many are calling it the next pandemic. Because there's a wave that we're all going to be facing again and focusing on mental health challenges and mental illness. Those things are not going away. We cannot ignore them, and that's not only for our schools, but that's also for our community as well. Additionally, the common theme that I've heard here is really making sure that those lines of communication are open as they possibly can be. So if there are challenges that arise, whether it's a COVID-19, whether it's a monkeypox, whether it's something that we don't even know exists six months from now, that we're all in this together, and we don't feel like anyone's voice is not heard, and that we can rise up as a community together and support one another moving forward together as a community and not being divisive and working against one another. Thank you.
I would also agree that I think the biggest challenge that we're facing in the next year or two will be transparency. I think because of the pandemic, obviously, there were lots of different opinions on how things should have been handled. With that being said, though, we also do need to come together and find common ground. I think we can all find common ground that the goals of education should be to provide an excellent education for our children and to provide opportunities for them to succeed and to feel wanted and needed and secure at school. I think also the safety of our schools is a big priority. I know the school has just voted on the new metal detectors. And while I think that's wonderful that we're implementing these safety procedures, and I commend the school board for doing so, I guess my question is, what are we doing to address the other issues of why we need those metal detectors in the school? Thank you.
I think the biggest challenge facing Midland Public Schools and schools across the country is a national effort to undermine public schools and teachers. In addition to learning loss inevitable in a global pandemic, I believe that there is a direct link to the long-term strategy for privatizing public schools and a decrease in test scores over the last twenty years. While politicians have split our communities on the importance of equitable education for all students, there's an increased focus on demanding perfection rather than allowing for a culture of curiosity and learning. When we rely only on test scores from for-profit companies to define the success of our students in our schools, we lose sight of the importance of K-12 learning. The 2022-23 budget is the most robust and equitable budget we have seen for our students in decades and goes a long way towards historic lack of prioritizing public education in Michigan. But we have to work to come together, recognize the fears that motivate our current behavior, understand that we all want what's best for our children, and work on building their futures together.
The biggest issues that I see is communicating with the teachers is on education. I spoke about this in the beginning part, about getting our children back on track. Our kids are two years behind. We're seeing illiteracy rates rise consistently. Children are struggling with reading levels. We're having kids that can barely do math problems that they should be beyond. And what is the problem here is that we don't, we need to prioritize getting these teachers that have overfilled classes, which I've heard many of times, the classrooms are too many. These teachers need support. And we also need to find these programs and implement these reading programs, and also bringing in additional help into these classrooms to help these teachers get these kids back on track. We need to focus and double down on education for these kids and focus on these reading, math, science scores that is, should be priority above anything else.
I'm going to reiterate what Jimmy said and what I said earlier. It is the education of the kids. It is catching them back up. It is providing them a better education. Layered over the top of that is perhaps an undermining of parent authority, a keeping the parents at hand link. This is why I am running and getting involved. I think there's a lot of agendas that are happening at the school level that don't necessarily align with me politically or morally or culturally even. There's a lot coming at our kids these days that I think are very, very dangerous. And I do respect that everyone in this room has a different opinion about something. I totally understand that. I know that we're not going to align, but I think we can all agree that our kids come first, and their education is of vital importance. And if the schools focus on education and leave the parents in their home environment to teach the other things, the cultural, the moral, that's their job ultimately and not that of the school. Thank you.
You know, in the last four years, one of the things that makes me not sleep at night is when I feel like I don't effectively listen to community members. And that manifests itself through getting yelled at or contentious board meetings. But at every single turn, I've figured out how to listen and engage with parents in this community, and I try my best to do so. The reason why I am so focused on trying to be a listening board member is because if our board meetings are divisive, that means we don't focus on student achievement, and it means that we don't focus on the well-being of our staff. Both of those are imperative to academic success. And I really feel like we need, as a community, to come together and make sure that we listen to each other. And I give you my word that I will continue to do so as I have done for the last four years, and that's to listen.
I think if a school board has one job, it's to hire a superintendent. And I don't know if this is going to happen literally in the next year, but it's no secret that in the very near future, our board is going to have to undertake a process of hiring a new superintendent. I think a superintendent has three primary skill sets. The superintendent is a financial steward of the district. The superintendent is the public face of the district and is also the chief educator for our community. It is nearly impossible to find someone that has all three of those skills. Lots of people have two. Very few have all three. have all three. I think we're in need of a chief educator. I think our finances are strong. I think our facilities are in great shape. I think our administrative team has tremendous resources to bring to bear. But there's a perception that our kids have suffered academically. Whatever learning losses are being seen nationally are not, as pronounced in Midland. Ran out of time. Thank you.
Our last question tonight. What do you see as the role of the school board?
If I'm elected to the school board, that's not just me, Matt Samaki, going in with my agenda and my opinion and trying to jam that through and make that true for the entire community. Being a part of the school board is collaboration. It's listening. It's working with one another. It's being able to help advise the superintendent. It's helping to listen to staff's needs and concerns. It's able to understand what needs our buildings really need, and any adjustments need to be made for safety and security. It's understanding the academics and what our students are learning, or where they could potentially improve, and building upon our areas of success and building up our areas where we maybe need a little bit more improvement. But primarily, being a part of the school board is being a part of a team. And being a part of a team where you can come together and make decisions that are best for Midland Public School District, not what's best for Matt Samaki. Thanks.
I also think that it's important that we come together as a community and as a school board. I also think political agendas of all types should be left at the door, that we should all come together with a spirit of collaboration, and openness, and transparency, and honesty. Because of my professional background as a nurse, I have dealt with diverse backgrounds of all types. I feel like I've always been able to be compassionate and a good listener to my patients, and come together as a team, and make a team effort to listen. However, I also think that the school board's role is to hold the superintendent accountable. We are the sounding board, and we are elected representatives of our community, and we need to listen to our constituents. We need to listen to the people. We need to listen to the parents, and to the teachers, and the people that we serve. With all those things, we also need to do that in a spirit of kindness, and honesty, and openness, and transparency. Thank you.
I believe school board members set goals, policies, objectives, and provide vision for the district. The priorities of our schools and community are reflected in the budget that we decide and the expenses that we approve. Board members are responsible for gaining perspective from stakeholders and holding the superintendent accountable for implementing what is best, in the best interest of Midland Public Schools. I believe that the best way for the board to do all this is to interact and build relationships, and to be where the people are. Board members should visit schools and pay attention to what is happening at the building level by interacting with staff and reading newsletters. We also need to organize listening sessions for our staff to share what they need and get administrative commitment to support those staff needs. I would also advocate for staff and board members to be included in training to help create safe and accessible learning environments for our schools. Being a parent advocating for others and attending school board meetings takes courage and deserves recognition. I believe that anyone who speaks at a board meeting deserves to be acknowledged.
Jennifer couldn't have put that any better. I just, God, you could come save mine, you know? That is exactly where we need to be, holding our superintendents accountable. We are the voice of you guys. We have to be that person. We have to be that champion for our students to understand and be that first line of the voice for our kids. And then also to make sure that we work together and be a flowing, working environment, so that way we can help make educated decisions, make the best decisions, make the best informed decisions, listen to local professionals, like mental health professionals and safety professionals, on what we can do to improve on our school district. We have to listen to our teachers. We need to involve them, our principals, who are, in some cases, are the only people that are just overworked with 600-plus students, and it's the only principal, but we don't hear from him. We need the transparency from us. Anything that we do has to be transparent.
At the risk of sounding redundant, I'm going to hit on the children first, education first. I mean, the school board is there to be teaching kids first and foremost, so that's why I keep hitting that. I think we are, the school board members are in a serious role. You've got over 7,000 students who are basically entrusted into the vision and the care of all of these schools, and so that's a huge responsibility. And I think with that responsibility is making sure that we are interacting with the parents, the teachers, the building administrators, that we are doing everything we can to make sure that that education is as good as it possibly can be, investigating best practices, investigating or hiring security professionals to come in and review our building protocols. Whatever we need to do, it is focusing on those children and the fact that the parents of the community are entrusting them to our schools, that we are good stewards of that, and take that responsibility extremely serious.
The role of the school board is to collaborate with stakeholders. And the stakeholders in our community are parents, staff, students, and other invested community members of our district. They're also to be a dedicated servant to the community and have servant leadership at their core. We are, our job is to drive consensus and set a vision for the district, provide governance, and hire one key employee. That's why I have also tried to look for best practices throughout the state. Last year, I was elected by fellow board members throughout the region, throughout the Great Lakes Bay region, to represent our region on the Michigan Association of School Boards as a trustee, and I can learn from other districts around the state. Finally, I think a role of a board member is to engage with our legislators so that our local representatives and senators know what we need and have an open line of transparent collaboration with them.
I think it's important to understand what the role of a board member is not. It's not to run the day-to-day affairs of the school district. The school board has one direct report, and it's the superintendent. The superintendent and the leadership team of the district run the day-to-day affairs. The board's role is to provide high-level, strategic oversight, counsel, and make policy decisions after listening to guidance from appropriate experts and professionals, and to be the eyes and ears of the school district out in the community. I think that the role of a board member is to be objective, to weigh competing considerations, and make sound decisions based on facts, not emotions, certainly not politics, and most importantly, to stay in the board's lane. Thank you.
This concludes the time available for questions. Thanks to all of the candidates for your thoughtful responses. And now we've come to the one-minute closing statements. You may use this time to address any of the questions, or add your comments to wrap up your positions and opinions on the various aspects of serving on the board of the Midland Public Schools. And for the closing statements, we will begin with Mr. Samaki.
Education runs through my veins. Again, I told you earlier, I was raised by both my parents, who were educators in Midland Public Schools. There were countless dinners, countless meals, countless times going to practices, going to sporting events. Both my brothers, who are older than me, were also raised by my parents through Midland Public Schools, going through Zibert, Jefferson, and then Dow High. And as I reflect, I'm extremely grateful and thankful for all of those opportunities that were provided to me. And now, as my children are going through Midland Public Schools, Midland Public Schools since I went through has improved exponentially even since that time. I want to join the school board to help continue to make those improvements. I've been around the state being able to provide professional learning when I was working at Central Michigan University. What we have here in Midland Public is very special, and I want to protect that, grow that, nurture it, and do everything I can for our community where we learn, live, work, and play. Thank you.
I, first and foremost, am a mom of three kids in this district. I'm very invested personally, and I want the best education that can be provided for them. I think Midland Public Schools has a wonderful list of programs and things. I was so excited to see the dual enrollment with college. I love that we're striving for excellence in our community, and I hope we can see more of those things. I hope we can create that foster, and create that learning environment, and foster those opportunities for our kids to grow and to succeed. I'm thankful for this opportunity. I commend everyone that's here tonight and running. I feel very strongly that these people all have the best of intentions for the students of our district. I feel that everyone feels that they are doing what they feel is best for our district. I feel privileged to be running for this office. I appreciate your vote. I just want to be that parent perspective on the school board. Thank you.
My goal for this forum has been to help voters understand that as an educator, parent, and person, I have a very different approach to what this position has historically been. Healthy relationships, effective communication, and passion for public education are imperative to the success of our schools. It's also extremely important that leadership is accessible, accountable, transparent, and reflects equity and life experience. I'm ready to be a voice to empower women and girls, and uplift the voices that need to be heard. Attending board meetings for the last five years has allowed me to develop a vision of what the possibilities for MPS can be, and the kind of future I think we have the opportunity to build together for our students, staff, and schools. I'm committed to this role, and I look forward to collaborating with the community to continue to seek common ground while also honoring and celebrating our unique differences. Thank you, thank you, for the opportunity to speak tonight, and thank you for your vote for Jennifer Ringold on your absentee ballot or at the polls on November 8th.
When it comes to running for the board, there's three things in my life. Those are my three little girls that mean the most to me in this world. Those things, those three girls are my priority, and their first thing in their life, they need is a quality education. And I think on this, for me being on the school board, I can bring a new vision, a diverse look at, from the school board, to help bring in some new thoughts, new feelings, and new ways of doing things for the school, and bringing in these systems to help raise my three girls to be strong, independent, well-educated women in our community, and help them become local leaders, and also to become business owners like myself, and to help further their time in this community, so that way, one day, they may be on the stage running for school board and helping encourage and further education for others also. Thank you.
I am that parent also. I am the one that's in the schools. I am the one that sets every sporting event, every music event, volunteering wherever I can, lending that hand. I am very passionate about our schools. I am proud of our schools and our community. I think they are wonderful. I do think, over my 13 years of volunteering, though, I feel that we have lost our way academically a little bit. I think there's a lot, as a school board, we can do to change that culture, to take advantage of our multiple schools, all the different programs, to meet all the kids where they are. Kids are very different. They have very different gifts. They learn in very different ways. And I think we can encourage a system of teaching that meets those kids where they are, that all struggle in different areas, even the most successful to the ones that struggle the most, that we can find a way to meet those kids, lift them all up, and ultimately bring them that success. I think I can, on the board, listen to parents and bring their voices onto the school board. That would be my goal as well, to listen to the teachers, so that everyone feels successful. Thank you.
First, I want to thank everybody involved for hosting. Appreciate you and your time. Today, we, each of the board members, potential board members got to express a very small fraction of what they believe in their vision of success for the district. Please look to the Midland Daily News questionnaire that some of us filled out, as well as those that took place in the MCA teacher interview for success in trying to find the best candidates going forward. You know, our legacy as a district is the top 5% best school district in America, top 5% best school district in Michigan, number one in the Great Lakes Bay region, number one for best teachers in the Great Lakes Bay region. All of this is a legacy of success to build on, but I will not be satisfied until we're the top 1%. And that is my commitment to our community. Please vote for me in November and support Phil Roush for school board. Thank you.
I want to thank the Midland community for the privilege of service. I'm very proud of the work that's been done in my tenure on the school board over the last four years, sometimes under very challenging circumstances. I believe I've been a good listener. I have two ears and one mouth, and I try to use them in at least that proportion. I have never learned anything while talking. I've learned a lot when I listen, and I've tried to be a good listener on the board. There's been a lot of talk tonight, and in the newspaper, and on social media about transparency. This board, the board I'm privileged to serve on and serve with, has been as transparent as any I can imagine. We have been accessible via email, text message, phone call. It would blow the mind, the number of communications we've received. The fact that certain people or certain groups didn't get what they want does not mean we haven't been transparent. I am proud of the work that we've done. The community should be proud of where our school district sits. I humbly ask your vote for reelection. Thank you.
This concludes our forum for this evening, and our thanks go to the board candidates: Mindy Cox, Sarah Ledwin, John Lauterbach, Phil Roush, Jennifer Ringold, Matthew Samaki, and Jimmy Shades for your participation. The Midland branch of AAUW and the Midland Area League of Women Voters very much appreciate that you have given voters an opportunity to hear your conversations about issues facing the Midland Public Schools. I want to again remind you of the election on November 8th, and I also want to extend a very special thank you to the people who made this program possible, including the MCTV staff and volunteers. Thanks also to the AAUW Midland Branch President Carol Arnosky and AAU member Jody Gardner, also Judy Frock and Catherine Redwine for your work as timekeepers. And please pass the word to your friends and neighbors that their votes are very important. Thank you again for watching and listening, and remember the motto, "It's my vote, I will be heard." And good evening.